You want to do roll call?
Chair McKay.
Here.
Vice Chair Schroeder.
Here.
Board Member Emmison.
Here.
Board Member Hartman.
Here.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Here.
We have quorum for the LPA meeting, Mayor.
Okay, we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, Andy, I'm gonna pass this down to you.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, just to help the public, a lot of them came in while you were meeting before. We had a workshop scheduled with the council at 6 o'clock to discuss US-27, followed by the meeting that here, which is an LPA hearing, which is considered the local planning agency, which is, in effect, the Planning and Zoning Board. The council sits as the members of the Planning and Zoning Board. This meeting will be immediately followed by the regular council meeting. Many of the items that need to be considered by the local planning agency first would then be continued later on to the other meeting. But Mayor, I do want to take a moment and speak to one of the items. I think it's probably the item that brings out most of the public here tonight.
Go right ahead.
That would be item number four, the Plant Nurseries Code Amendment. And I wanted to speak for a moment about the history of that and where we are, and so how we came to be here this evening. This is something that started, the wheels started in process on this many, many months ago. We had some issues with some nurseries in town. Council had some discussion on it at the time, wasn't able to come to a resolution or terms on that. And so what the council did as a whole was they tasked the Comprehensive Plant Advisory Board with discussing this item and bringing back some recommendations to them. The recommendations that are here, that were in the agenda to be considered tonight, came out of that advisory board. As the town administrator, I was obligated to bring this forth tonight and put it on the agenda because the council had tasked the advisory board with coming back with some recommendations, which is here. Public has been very vocal about this item. I've heard from many of you. I know the council members have as well. I have spoken to them individually. I wasn't able to share this collectively until this evening when you're here in an advertised and properly noticed meeting. But I know that many of you have issues and questions and problems with various aspects of this proposed legislation. And from a staff standpoint, if council doesn't have objections, staff would like to withdraw this item.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
All right, yes.
Yes.
Here, here.
Okay.
All in favor out there, say.
Okay, good, thank you. All right. Is there another item in the LPA?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Is there another item in the LPA?
Yes, now we would back up to item number three, which is the school board's site.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I think we should probably, just for the record, have a motion to withdraw this item. And formally take a vote on that.
Make a motion to withdraw this item from consideration on the agenda tonight.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Board Member Emmison.
Yes.
This is a motion to withdraw, correct, okay. Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schroeder.
Yes.
And Chair McKay.
Yes.
Okay, the item is withdrawn.
Done.
We will also, just for the record, have to formally withdraw this when we move to the regular meeting and handle that ordinance.
Sure. Okay. The other part of the LPA.
School board's site.
Would you like me to read the first item, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, the first item is a resolution of the Local Planning Agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to the Town of Southwest Ranches future land use map to change the designation of approximately 33 acres from medium-density residential to rural ranch to match Broward County's future land use map designation, generally located at the northeast quadrant of Sheridan Street and southwest 190th Avenue, providing for an effective date.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter?
Mayor?
No.
You may want to let Mr. Katem speak to this.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. Russell, do we have the slides up? Okay. Very briefly, this piece of property, which is, there we are. On the center of your screen is approximately 33 gross acres. It's owned by the Broward County School Board. The town owned it at one point, sold it to the school board. It's essentially wetlands, was going to be a high school, a public high school at one time. The school board has no use for it. It's going to surplus it. And this property has had a land use plan designation of 16 units to the acre residential, which is non-existent anywhere else in the town. And this is just correcting this incompatibility with everything in the town and restoring it to rural ranch. Also, the county land use plan has this as rural ranch, never certified this. And so we're just correcting it, making it the way, restoring it to the way it should be. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter?
I read that too. What was in there concerning the garden apartments that you're allowed to put on that property? I didn't understand that because what you just said, in my mind, it's, you're giving it a zoning for garden apartments, right? With a certain destiny?
Just the opposite.
Then I stand corrected, sorry.
Yep.
Hi, John Eastman, 188th Avenue. Yeah, I think originally we had a requirement from the federal government for affordable housing, and this was the only spot that fit it. So that's how that designation ended up there many years ago. And yes, please get rid of it. Thank you.
David Kazinsky, 6411 Holliday Trail. My only question is, is there, the school board's calling this surplus land. Is there any possibility they're gonna sell this to our neighbors to the south? Because I don't think that's in our town's best interest. Maybe that's putting the cart before the horse. But I just wouldn't like Pemberpines picking this up.
We'll be keeping an eye on it.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any additional questions?
I do have a question based on David's question. So let's say our friends to the south decided to buy this. I mean, it's gonna be on the open market. Somebody's gonna pick it up and they may decide to do that. Jeff, can we keep the zoning the way it is and stop them from perhaps putting a maintenance garage on it and it being their property and municipal property, no taxes and all that sort of thing?
Town has total control over zoning and land use on this property, regardless of ownership.
So, all right, so we would just wait to see who purchased it and we may put a sign up saying, "Not here." Thank you.
All right, call the question, please.
Board Member Emmison.
Squeeze. It's a base.
Board Member Hartman.
Your light's gotta go.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schroeder.
Yes.
Chair McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
She was a yes. Delsa was a yes, by the way.
Thank you.
Yes, Delsa was a yes.
Would you like me to do the next item, Mayor?
Yes, please.
All right, this is a resolution of the Local Planning Agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt or not adopt an ordinance creating a special exception use category and a review process, providing for an effective date.
This is part of that nursery thing, isn't it?
No, this is a separate item. Jeff, would you like to?
Sure.
Yeah, explain this one.
We have a file for this one, too. Okay. Special exception is actually a term you find in Merriam-Webster's, which I thought was interesting. You don't usually find zoning terms, but it's use of a property that's allowed under a zoning ordinance under specified conditions. Next, please. All right, I've got that. This ordinance would define a special exception use as a use with one or more characteristics that may be incompatible with the permitted uses and intended character of a particular zoning district and which therefore requires special review and consideration to ensure that each instance of the proposed use is appropriately cited, designed, and operated within the zoning district. The genesis of this is that we've been working on several issues recently. One of them is the US-27 business category. Obviously, retail plant nurseries and commercial plant nurseries have been a topic of discussion for code changes. And in the past, we've even had instances where something like this would be very useful. For example, when we dealt with the wildlife exhibition. I don't know if you all remember that. That we had to create a special code provision for that and a special process for that. But a special exception process is a blanket process that you put in place that you can use later. You can designate a use, a special exception use, and you don't have to create new code provisions specific to that use. It's a tool that is so widely used in the United States that it's almost ubiquitous among local and county governments. Sometimes it's called a conditionally use. Sometimes it's called a special exception use. The town's been in business now for, you know, going on 20 years. And it hasn't had this provision and it hasn't really needed it because commercial uses and industrial parcels, which are where it's generally used, are so limited and isolated in the town that it just really wasn't much of an issue. Now we are dealing with the US-27 corridor and the inability to anticipate every single use that might come around out there. And as well with other ordinances such as plant nurseries, if and when we ever do anything with that. But it allows you, it allows the town to designate a certain use as something that can only be approved on a case-by-case basis because while it's generally compatible, it isn't always and it's always dependent on the citing and the operation of those uses. And that's why they're case-by-case. So what this ordinance would do is it wouldn't create any special exception uses per se. It's not designating any use as now permitted by special exception. It's just putting a process into place that the town can use when and if it desires. So the components of this ordinance are that any application for special exception, and again, the town would have to actually create special exception uses. We don't have any right now. But any future use designated as a special exception would be subject to a public hearing, public notice within 1,500 feet, newspaper, et cetera, the way we do all public hearings. It would give the council the ability to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. It establishes extensive criteria for the review of these applications, covering pretty much any potential nuisance or issue that might arise with the use, regardless of what that use is. It provides for the approval to run with the property owner, not the land. And it provides for expiration in the event of abandonment of a special exception use and other circumstances. It provides for the right of inspections. And it provides for the council's ability to modify or revoke a special exception permit if there are continuous code violations, if conditions of the approval are violated, and as others have always provided. So that's the overview. It's a framework. It's a process. We have a process for certain types of farms, for farms and non-commercial farms, where they can ask for relief, and it's a process that we have in the code. This would be another process that would allow the town to identify uses in any zoning district it chooses or zoning districts that we don't currently have that would only be permitted by special exception. Thank you.
So basically, this is another tool in our toolbox to address things.
That's exactly what it is.
Okay. Quick comment about it?
Go ahead.
There's a very big benefit to us here as well that Jeff didn't directly get into. The councils that have sat up here before haven't granted a zoning variance, I believe, ever. And a lot of developers know that, so they don't bother. They're either gonna fit into our current code or they go elsewhere to do whatever they want to do. This produces, to a certain extent, what he said as a way that we can grant certain rights that we're comfortable with and the community's comfortable with without doing a variance. So effectively, somebody comes in, 99.9%, they comply with our code. There's something we're comfortable with, the community's comfortable with. Rather than change the code, we can basically grant the special exception. I think that's a good tool.
Sounds like it, but I have another question. What is the, how would the fee, or how would this come into play if you were to put it into use? In other words, how would someone know that they need to apply for this, come before the council to get this special exception? And what would the cost be related to it?
They would know in the same way that they'd find out anything that's required of them as far as permits and review process. For example, when the town created the waiver of plat process previously, people could subdivide without coming to the town at all. And we were finding that people were creating illegal lots, selling those illegal lots. And then the folks who were the buyers of those illegal lots came to us, you know, crying. And all we could tell them was go sue the seller. So we instituted this process, and let me tell you, within six to eight months, everybody knew about it. And we haven't had those problems anymore. So anyone interested in doing a use that the council has designated as a special exception use, they're gonna find out by doing their due diligence that that's required. And if they come in for a certificate of use, because they didn't bother to ask anyone, they're gonna be told you need a special exception permit to operate this use. Secondly, how much would it cost? The fee that the town sets is entirely up to the town. Everything else that comes before the council is done by cost recovery. So it's a matter of what it's going to cost to get it in front of the council. We know that that includes advertisement, mail notice, and staff review.
A variance application is what, like $1,800?
$1,750.
Okay, I was close.
Yeah.
So what do you, on a guess, what do you think this would be dollars and cents-wise, just off of what?
I would say that it's gonna completely depend on the type of use. I don't think that, there are some uses that are fairly simple, some that are fairly complex, some operations that are complex. So it would really be hard for me to tell you what it might cost.
Okay. But ultimately, somewhere along the line, if we approve this, we've gotta come up with a fee related to it.
Yes, and if.
If it's cost recovery, it could be $5,000, but.
Like I said, depends on the use. I think with any kind of application we get, and I mean any kind, you can have one that just phone it in, get it on an agenda. It doesn't need a lot of review. It's a complete application. There's a track record to go off of. And then you have some that are a mess. The people need a ton of guidance. And basically, you're holding their hand throughout the whole process, and it can cost a substantial amount based upon that.
Right. All right, Delsa had a question. Go ahead.
Well, actually, not a question. It just seems that this is a good housekeeping item for us to have because it gives us the ability to approve or disapprove, adopt or not adopt, whatever it is that comes before us. And it would seem to me that the cost, as you were describing, would really depend on what was coming before us. Each thing might be different. If it's simple, go with the lower. If it's higher, then you decide at that time. But it doesn't seem like it's that complicated.
Okay. We need a motion and a second. We didn't do that yet.
Is that based on whether or not it's approved or just right out the gate? The fee?
No, no, it's based entirely on what the proposal is, where they're proposing it. Just to give you an example, somebody may, you may designate a certain use special exception because you want to review it on a case-by-case basis to prevent problems. And it may be on a major road with nowhere near a residence and have a huge property where they're offering to buffer it. And it could be fairly simple. You know, we can eliminate perhaps traffic. We can eliminate, you know, visual, all types of potential issues. And it may be a simple business operation. And then you may have one that's complicated. They don't have their ducks in a row. And we have to guide them through the whole process over and over. They have surveyors and professionals drawing plans that are consistently wrong.
So basically, there could be a fee. And above and beyond that fee, depending on how much additional work you have to do, there could be additional costs related to it.
And that would be the same as with any public hearing item that comes before you now.
They're all variable costs, is what you're saying. It's all depending on the case.
Okay, I need a motion and a second.
Yeah, this gives us a vehicle to do more of our work. So I'll start off with a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the council. Come right up.
Michelle McBride, 13851 East Palomino. So the question, Jeff, is when you say special exception, is this something that we already have?
No.
We don't have it? So this is a different special exemption, correct?
May I answer?
Go right ahead.
Okay. There is no, this, we have one and it's for non-commercial farms. This is completely different. This has nothing to do with that.
Okay. And so when Bob was talking about, you know, well, this gives us more leverage as far as to be able to approve or disapprove something. Remember, I was sitting with you with the plant, what do you call it, Comp Plan Advisory Board? And we spent a lot of time going through so many things, so I couldn't imagine why we would need something else. You know what I'm saying? Like, we went through, how many? 100 and something things. So I don't really understand the need for it based on what I sat through. Do you understand what I'm saying, Bob?
Yeah, yeah.
You do. So, and does that give any leverage to you guys to disapprove something because, you know, is that giving you more power than what we already have?
It gives us a tool to fix things.
Well, that's my only concern. That's my only concern.
That's it, you then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, back to the council.
Okay, Mrs. McBride, if I could explain, I'll give you an example of something where this may apply. Right now, landscaping companies that do not own property here are outlawed, or banned, or prohibited. It's a prohibited use in this town. This may be a vehicle for them to be legal. There is no current vehicle for them to do that. Just to give you an example of one instance. There may be 1,000 other ones. We just haven't thought of them yet. Hopefully, that answers your question.
We can't go back and forth, sorry.
You're not on the mic, so.
So, all right. Anyway, back to us. Any additional questions? Call the question.
Board Member Emmison.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schroeder.
Yes.
Chair McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. One more.
Final item for the Local Planning Agency, Mayor, is a resolution of the Local Planning Agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending adoption of the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2020 through 2024 and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to the council on the additional discussion.
Does Jeff have anything to add to this?
I don't know. Andy, go ahead.
Just the one thing I'll let, this is a statutory requirement. We do this annually. It's our list of capital improvement projects that we formally adopt. But those are things that we maintain throughout the budget process and everything else. So we just, we roll those forward as you add new projects and we update that with the state to meet our statutory requirements. It's, for the purposes of tonight's meeting, it's more of a housekeeping issue, Mayor.
Right.
Okay. Call the question, please.
Board Member Emmison.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schroeder.
Yes.
And Chair McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Two for two. Motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Yes.
We'll accept the adjournment? We're gonna stand and do the pledge all over again?
Yes.
All right, forgive us, but we're out of the LPA and into the regular meeting. So if we could all bother you to please stand for the pledge again.
It's a government thing. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Call the roll. All right. That's what I was trying to say. Roll call, please.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder. Vice Mayor Schroeder.
I'm here.
Councilmember Emmison. Councilmember Emmison.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor. Make a motion to pull the item out of order. Mayor, would you like to entertain a motion to pull the item out of order for the nursery ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, what number is that?
Dispatch of that item. I believe that's item?
Item 10.
10.
Item 10, okay.
Need a motion?
Can I move to?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Call the question.
So this is just to move the item out of order?
This is to remove item?
To move the item out of order, correct. Okay, so Councilmember Emmison.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. That's taken care of. All right, now we're back to regular.
No, Mayor, I believe we want to dispatch this item. Now we were just moving it out of order. So now I believe we want a motion to withdraw the item.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to remove this item from the agenda and toss it back to the Comp Plan Board.
Can we talk about?
I don't know, yeah.
My motion.
Does it have a second? Does the mayor have a, does the?
Nobody got a second. So somebody wanted to make a different motion.
Motion dies.
Let me have a discussion first, if I may.
Well, somebody's got a second. Did you get it?
I understand that. I'll follow it up with a motion. Okay, here's a suggestion, that we take this item and we give it back to staff first, who will confer with all of us on an individual basis, and then go to the Comp Board and kick it around. I mean, we've got time on our hands. This is something we've gotta do today. I mean.
I like that idea.
Yeah, but I thought we were in the press and that's why we're gonna have a special meeting for two hours to address it.
That was on 27.
Okay.
This is a nursery ordinance.
Nursery ordinance, okay.
So that's my motion.
Sorry.
Is that we kick it back to staff, staff refines it.
Right.
And then goes to the Comp Board.
That's fine.
Okay, so is the audience understanding that this is gonna go back to the Comp Board?
After. After we have some input into it. Back up.
Yeah.
We got a motion and a second, right? Did you second his motion?
He has not yet.
I made a motion.
I seconded it.
Oh, you have, okay. So this is a new motion to have staff review it first and then go back to comp plan. And that's the new motion and second? Okay, got it?
Got it. I don't know. I guess we'll discuss it some more. So, and why are we sending him back to the Comp Plan Board again?
Wait a minute, why? We have a motion and a second.
We do.
Okay.
So I'm jumping in a discussion related to it.
Yep, got it.
So my question is, why are we going back to the Comp Plan Board with it?
I would say, I would define it like chicken soup. Can't hurt at this point. Get their opinion. We can vocalize what we think. There are some good elements in this.
A couple.
Yeah, and I agree. Just a couple. But we're throwing, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
No.
Okay, and there's some really.
Throw the baby out with the bathwater, bring it back with the good things, ball by itself, but I hear what you're saying. Throw the baby out with the bathwater, bring it back with the good things, ball by itself, but I hear what you're saying.
No, but I mean, there's some really bad stuff in here, that's like nonsense, okay, and I don't know how it got in there, and, you know, I'm not gonna dig too deep on that subject, but it is nonsensical.
We wanna dig, I wanna dig, I wanna know how it did get in there, really, seriously. Their job, we gave this to them and we told them exactly what we wanted, and how did it get in there?
Unfortunately, Steve Breckus is out of the country, he's not able to be here tonight, he's the chairperson of the Comp Plan Board.
Okay, let's, all right, wait, 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 this is not a free-for-all, ladies and gentlemen, please? Please, come on. That's not necessary. So, my point I'm trying to make is that the motion that I made was that we go through staff and then we kick it back to the Comp Board. And then it comes back to us.
And we just thought?
Yeah, it comes back to us ultimately anyway, so what's the big deal?
Well, if it goes to staff and comes to us, we can make a decision whether or not we even want to send it back to Comp. Why would we want to send it back to Comp? Look what they just did.
Yeah, I get that, but we were, we're gonna probably remove all of that, because there are a couple of good things in here.
Yeah, this was almost two years' worth of work, there are good things in here.
I get it, but I guess?
There's some bad stuff, no doubt.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I have a little bit of an uncomfortable feeling with what we got out of that on this one, and I think it should come to us and we address it directly.
When in doubt, we gotta punt, I was told.
Is that what that was? So, you wanted to come back to us, we'll make some decisions and changes, and then send it back to Comp?
We don't have to send it back to Comp.
That's right, we can decide, forget that.
That's kinda what they, I understand that, like I said, they're asking for transparency and, you know, I can remember sitting up here and saying, put it in Town Hall, dah 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 dah, I want transparency, well, I want transparency too. I wanna know how they came up with this and who. I, I.
Well, in that scenario, that's fine, you gotta send it back to the Comp Plan Board.
Right.
If you wanna get your answers, like, and I don't disagree with that, but you gotta send it back to the Comp Plan Board and let the chair, let Steve come here and explain it. He's the, listen, he's the chairperson of the Comp Plan Board.
Be accountable for the work they did.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, it's?
So, am I getting this correctly, I mean, I know the people that are here, but he is the one that speaks for the board and nobody else.
That's the way we traditionally do it.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Listen, not only that, you'll have some of the other board members present when he's here, but anyhow, so are we gonna go along with sending it to staff? Let them filter whatever it is we want them to do, and then they're gonna kick it back to the Comp Plan Board, the Comp Plan Board? Actually, I think we oughta have it so that the Comp Plan Board meets here with us and explains it.
Well, I just know who goes to those Comp Board planning meetings, and I don't attend them as much as I probably should.
Can't you just request the chair and the vice chair to be here and?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm basically saying, but if we do a meeting and combine that meeting with them being here, explaining the issue, we can take it up, fix whatever, and move on and get it done. That's my thought. And we get our explanation on how we got where we are.
Okay, we're not doing the Q and A.
Don't, Doug. Don't take the bait.
If that's the way you wanna work it, and it comes to me first, all of us up here first, and we decide whether or not we're gonna send it back, I don't have a problem with that, but just to send it back to the Comp Board without satisfying their taste of, how did it happen like that?
No, I wanna request the Comp Board to be at that meeting and answer to it. I don't wanna just send it back to them, I don't see a reason to do that. I would like them present at the meeting to explain how we got where we are.
We just gotta think of the logistics of having the Comp Plan Board sitting right there, but yeah. It's probably the fastest way to get this done, rather than have meeting after meeting after meeting.
Exactly, that's kinda where I was going.
Everything has been in the public, but you're right, we have some questions on how things ended up the way they are. I mean, I've had conversations and I have a rough idea, but you know what? It'd be better to hear it from the board than us trying to figure it out on our own.
Okay, so it's only fair to say that they will all have access?
What's that?
Russell, did you have something to say?
Just a suggestion to try to solve all of the concerns being raised at this point. We already decided to have a meeting on January 23rd to decide this item. You could kind of satisfy all of these requirements by having, at that meeting, a presentation from the Comp Plan Board, if that's what you wanted to do.
That's what I was getting.
January 23rd is 27. Are you looking to have, combine the two?
Oh, I'm, okay, you're right, I'm sorry. It's two different issues. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, but I would really like staff to go through it first, with us.
No, I thought it was?
And that's gonna take time.
He wants them to go through us individually through it.
Yeah. With us. We want, I wanna weigh in on, on what I think is bad and what I think is not bad.
Okay.
Mayor?
All right, and I think all of us should have that opportunity.
Andy, go ahead.
It sounds like, from what I'm hearing from council, that there is consensus to at least have an interim step with staff to go through and try to build consensus based on some council feedback. Whether or not you choose to kick it to the Comp Plan Board again after that is fine. Would you, would you like to have an interim update on this item publicly, based on the consensus I'm able to achieve from all of you at the January 23rd meeting?
Yes.
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 So, I'll have individual discussions with all of you, try to build that consensus, obviously I cannot share that with you all privately, so publicly, in the interest of transparency, the January 23rd meeting, I will then be able to share with you the consensus I was able to achieve on the items that you all like and what you don't like, and then you'll have the decision on whether or not you wanna task it with the, to the Comp Plan Board or not.
I like that, we have some heavy stuff, so we're gonna charge you all double time, just so you know.
Okay.
Need to clarify that motion as to how we wanna do this?
It's Gary's motion, so.
Well, I can amend the motion to say that the Comp, sending it back to the Comp Plan would be optional, as opposed to required.
That's fine.
We'll get an update on the 23rd. Yeah.
Does your second hold then?
My second holds.
Okay.
All right. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
That was optional, right?
Yes.
Then yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay. That item's withdrawn.
Doug, do you wanna recap that so everybody kinda understands? We went in a lot of circles.
I'm gonna let Russell recap it since he did it, so, would you recap what, exactly what that is, so the public knows?
Sure, okay, so first of all, this item, this was a motion to withdraw the item, first of all.
And what was, and what was, hold on, and what was that item?
This was the item regarding the ordinance on first reading for the nurseries, which by virtue of it being withdrawn, it precludes any public comment on this item tonight, but basically what's gonna happen is this item's gonna go back to staff for some cleanup, if you will, and then from there, the town administrator Burns is gonna bring the items to you, what's been distilled, and bring that to council at the January 23rd meeting, and then council will, can decide at that point whether or not they wanna send that to the Comp Plan Board.
Clear?
Yeah, optionally.
Good, yeah, optional.
Thank you, Russell.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay. We're good.
All right, public comment?
Yep, is that where we're at?
No, it's withdrawn, or that, on that item.
On that item.
Okay, well, now that we're done with that item, we're back to the beginning of the list. Public comment?
We go back to the beginning of the meeting.
Yep.
Seeing none?
No, I thought somebody turned in cards, no public?
We have some public comments. All right, so the first speaker is David Kozinski, followed by Robin Ditzian, followed by Mark Stevens, and then John Eastman.
Uh, you wanna clarify?
If these items are on item 10, obviously you can't speak on that item, that item's been withdrawn. Did we lose that?
Mic's not on.
Let me give you that, another mic.
Test, test, test. David, cause, just, can you reset my clock? David Kozinski, 6411 Holliday Trail. Coming to speak to you today about my participation with the town's birthday party. I am part of the sponsorship committee, myself and Robert Sirota, and we are presently doing the sponsorships. We have four different categories, the thoroughbred, $2,500, Palomino, $1,000, Mustang, $500, and the Friends of Southwest Ranches, any amount below then. Everybody, please contact myself or Robert to help out with this. The town has allocated only $15,000, we're gonna need a bit more than that to accommodate the live music, the rides, the games, and displays for childrens and adults. So, please contact Robert or myself and with some contributions that we can help in get you to promote your businesses, thanks.
And the date of that is what, April 4th?
April 4th.
Next speaker is Robin Ditzian. Okay.
Okay.
Mark Stevens?
I was here for the same thing.
Okay.
As long as we can keep it transparent, where we all know what's going on ahead of time.
You'll get advance notice.
Be a part of the town.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Some of us have been here 50 years and we don't come like we should, so it's our fault, but if we knew more about it, we might. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Last speaker, I'm sorry, not last speaker, John Eastman? Thank you, okay, no. Okay, the next speaker would be Mary Ann Allen.
A lot of us gave up holiday plans to be here this evening, as you can imagine, there wasn't any parking outside, and I feel we've kind of been short shrifted here in not being able to avoid some of our concerns, because a lot of us are not adept at all the verbiage that's being used tonight, and are confused with what's gonna happen, what's going to be tabled, what's going to be discussed, are you gonna discuss this at the next meeting and then vote on it right away? We have a lot of concerns, when we, when we made the plans to create this town, we knew what was going on in plantation acres. People that had horse ranches now had to take their horse trailers and take them to a mobile park and rent a place. They couldn't keep the trailers on their own property. Now I see the same thing starting here, and we set that in concrete. We put it into our bylaws that this would never happen to people that had horse ranches here in the Southwest Ranches. And now it's happening, so you can appreciate our concern. This is our very livelihood that you're talking about, so please give us a heads up, don't bury it under masses of paperwork that people can't read through, this is important. Put it out so that we all know that these items are coming up, so we can give you our input. Thank you very much.
Be, Michelle McBride? Did you, did you wanna speak?
Again, Mayor, just as a reminder, this matter's been withdrawn, so it's, if it was on the withdrawn motion, then there can no, cannot be any public comment on it. I mean, you're open to speak on anything else, as long as it's not the withdrawn item.
Okay, not necessarily the withdrawn item, but I would like to talk about that I've been trying to be a little bit more involved, finding out that a lot of information comes out of these Comp Plan Advisory Board meetings, I find them very interesting. I wish that more of you would come, because I think we could use your input. I really enjoy going to them, but I noticed that some of the items that we discuss are brought to the board and it's nothing of what was discussed, so what I'm trying to figure out as a citizen is what happens with what we discuss at the Comp Plan Advisory Board meeting, and then it comes to you guys at the council, and then it, then we read about it in the agenda, what, who, who does that? Does that make sense?
Andy, you wanna answer it?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand the question, but there was no work really done on this with staff. Jeff serves as the planning consultant to the board and meets with them, as you know from attending those meetings, and does his best to try to capture what comes out of those boards. Once that's submitted to Russell and I to be agendized, we do nothing with it, based on what comes out of there. There's no changes or modifications or anything else made to it. Our obligation is to bring what's been voted on by those advisory boards to council for their consideration.
But I think the real, the confusion and why most people are here is because they're trying to figure out who put that in that verbiage.
How do things stand?
Because that didn't come from the Comp Plan Advisory Board, not while, while I was there, not while we were there. It didn't happen while we were there.
Mayor, if I may?
Go right ahead.
It came through that process, because there was, there were no additional hands on this, there were no additional steps, there was no other massaging of that information, so this is what came up. This was a months-long process and over multiple meetings, but it's what came up through that process.
So do they meet without the public?
No. They're all publicly, they're all publicly noticed meetings, there are no private meetings.
We have the same questions, Michelle.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm probably over my time, thank you.
You have 30 seconds.
Anyone else?
Last two speakers, Mayor, Fred Cox and Kathy Cox are the last two speakers. Can you?
Go right ahead.
Please. Can you, can you speak in the order?
All right, with no malice intended, I could do this in three minutes, with no malice intended. I'm surprised, someone can't hear me, said it better?
Yes.
All right, with no malice intended, and I mean this, and, you know, it's not personal, but I'm recommending that every member of the comprehensive plan advisory board resign. If they did this, they should resign, because they're not representing Southwest Ranches residents. If they didn't do this, they should resign and protest until it's corrected and a public apology and explanation is given. In not talking about the item that was pulled, I wanna publicly thank Bob for suggesting the future that has happened tonight has happened. I wanna publicly thank Doug for strongly saying he would vote against the item that I can't talk about. And especially wanna talk, thank Jeff Cadums for being open, honest, answering his phone, returning calls, and explaining things. He did a superb job. And with three minutes, that's it. One more thing. There is at least two things in here that is against the Farm, right, the Farm Act. Fred Siegel has offered to come and speak. I know that Richard and certainly Keith know more about law than I do, but I can read, and there's a few items that are against the right format.
Jim Laskey Country Estates, I invest in public companies for a living, that's how I make my living. And if you notice, that there is a correlation between good boards of directors and performance of any major company, and when something happens, to break that up a little bit, disaster usually strikes, and if you, if, the market will punish you big time. So I look at the same thing here. This, this language, all this language is over the head of the average comp board, and they're understanding. So, there was some monkey business here somewhere, I don't know where it came from, but this doesn't sound like a board that you guys pick. They're not experts in these subjects, so they had to have additional input in here that, who would come up with, with all this certificate of occupancy?
Isn't that what we just pulled, though? That we're not supposed to be talking about?
You can't discuss that.
Anyway, all right, okay, you're right, you're right, but the same thing still applies in this case. And when you have a situation like that, it's important that you waive the rule that you were talking about, sir, okay? And let us understand why this happened, because that's what scares us, that's about trust. We have to trust you guys every day, most of the time, and then all of a sudden, something happens. And then all of a sudden, something happens and what the heck's going on here? It really is egregious. And if more people knew about it and would read it and try to read it and then try to apply it to themselves, I'm telling you, you've got a real rat's nest here.
Just say it. Just, just one little thing, if it's okay.
I believe Kathy Cox was the next.
Kathy Cox was next.
That's correct. And we also have another speaker that signed up as well.
I just want to say to the gentleman that I think we've already decided to try and find out what happened to the item that was tabled, okay? So give us at least that opportunity, especially the new kid on the block, i.e. me.
Kathy Cox, 4940 Thoroughbred Lane. Number one, I'm going to take issue with the town attorney over whether or not we could have a public comment on this. It is no longer on the agenda. You've taken it off. So I think you could have public comment on this.
Actually, you can't. Thank you, though. I mean, we can disagree, but I'm the town attorney right now, so you can't comment on a withdrawn item.
It's fine. You're doing your job. I disagree with your judgment. But let's go beyond that. And let us talk about the council's responsibilities regarding an issue like this. If the Comp Plan people put this together, that's all fine and good. I mean, they're just a political appointment to satisfy the political hangers-on that are wannabes and want to sit up there where you're sitting. But what we really did is elect you to represent us. And you start, you need to start taking control and have, exercising your power over this town and over these boards. These boards are expensive, and generally speaking, a lot of people on them don't know what they're talking about. And evidence right here with what we were dealing with. You all need to read your stuff, do your homework, and come to the council informed. Now, you've got a lot of stuff to read. I've been there, I've done that, and I got the T-shirt, and I'm done. But you all need to do that. And you need, like I said, to exercise your authority and your power that we gave you when you got elected. Don't abdicate to the comp board or any other board in this town. You're the ones who are elected, and the buck stops here. So regardless of who did this, it's still on you for what's before us.
I'd just like to make one, I'd just like to make a statement related to that. The majority of the council members up here attend all the, whether it's the comp board meeting, the parks board meeting, the drainage board meeting, the majority of us attend those meetings. So we're well on top of and well aware usually what comes out of them. This one surprised us all, so I must tell you that. But we're on it, we read it, and we're present at most of them.
I have a quick comment.
All right, Noel wants to speak.
We have one other speaker, Mayor.
He's the last.
No, we have one other before. We have Debbie Ayton also signed up.
Okay.
She's the final one that signed up, and then Noel will speak after that.
Hi, I'm Debbie Ayton, 14521 West Palomino Drive. I kind of have a question, I guess maybe a procedural question. I'm not involved in government regularly, but I am seeing a lot, I am hearing a lot of stuff that's going on. There's a whole lot of stuff going on on social media. So one of the things I guess I would ask tonight is if you could just explain in a little bit easier terms for us that are not always involved, how this item is going. I understand it's going to go back. Is there an availability for public comment along the way? Is there input if you're not on the board to be able to talk about this? Is it going to go back to this planning board to re-present it to you and then you just vote on it without public comment? Just so that the rest of us understand it? Because I know there was a lot of people here that left that are very confused, and we don't understand the whole process to it. So maybe if you could put it in very simple terms, it would be really great for us to be able to understand.
Okay. Noel, you're last.
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. I'd like to take a moment to actually defend the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. This task was given to the board by the council so the council wouldn't have endless workshops exactly what the compound board had for many, actually a couple of years now on this. And this is the fifth version of it.
Again, we've got to limit it. If you want to talk about the comp board in general, we can do that, but not about the withdrawn. Thanks.
Okay. So it was assigned to the board by the council. And council members, there was always a majority basically at every meeting of the They had, many times, the chair would ask, is there any input from the council members? And occasionally, there would be some, but mostly there wasn't on any of these items. So I'd like to respectfully say that while yes, they did not know all of the permutations of any ordinance that they have ever looked at. They have always relied on staff to give those directions as to what is correct and what is incorrect. That is why this is the fourth version this time. And on other ordinances that have come before the council, many versions. Because it's always put to our planning staff, it's always put to legal staff, and it's always put to the regular staff of the town, whether they be zoning or whatever, or you know, code enforcement, to see if it would work. So what you have here is those things are put into many of the ordinances that do not have any idea because they are from the planning, legal, or regular staff of the town. And therefore, the comprehensive plan being an advisory board, we can only advise. And it behooves the council, when they see a problem or they see something they don't understand, to ask that question so the board can ask staff to get the correct answer and bring it back to them. That is, and you wouldn't have this problem that you're having now. Thank you very much.
We have a newsletter that comes out every month. You all get it. So for you to sit there and say you're unaware of anything or anyone that can help you is not true. That Comprehensive Planning Board has a liaison. He is a council member here. And at any given time, you could probably pick up the phone and make the call or text or email, and he would respond to it. I'm almost certain of it. Andy also is here, the mayor is here. Our numbers are accessible to everybody's. So if you have a problem, you also can do your due diligence and pick up the phones or texts or whatever you need to do to contact us. If we don't have the answer, which sometimes we don't, we will definitely try to get it to you. That is for certain, and I think I speak for everybody. I'm also going to say I don't think there's anybody up here, and I'm saying it for myself because before we became a town, back in the early 80s, right up until now, and even if I wasn't sitting up here, I am not a wannabe. I never have been and never will be. I'm not self-serving to myself. And that's what a wannabe is. And I am not that person. And I take offense to it. It's not my point. We've had council members that have left the building, never to be seen or returned again. And we've had council members that have stayed and touched, and they've been here. Those aren't wannabes, those are people that really care.
Public servants.
Public servants. That's what we are. And I'm here to serve and to do what I can. And if we don't agree, we don't agree. That doesn't mean you get to sit out there and cast stones and call names. That's so child and pedic. You belong in Washington. That's what they do in Washington. So that's what I want to say. I don't think any one of us are wannabe sitting up here. I'm sorry. I defend us all.
All right. We're done with public comment. Board reports. Do we have any board reports?
Go ahead, we dare you.
Go ahead.
All right. See, no board reports. Council member comments?
Yeah, I'll take first shot.
Go right ahead. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, whatever. Whatever floats your boat. I just want to make a couple of comments. First, I'll just go through some of the fun stuff coming up. We have the Fun Horse Show on the 14th, that's this Saturday, from 8 to 5 at the Equestrian Park. We have the lighting at Town Hall, of the holiday lights, on the 19th at 4:30, the Interfaith. Andy, I'm not sure I got the title of that right, but you'll correct me in your comments. Town Hall closes at 1:00 PM on the Christmas Eve on the 24th and reopens on the 26th. The same thing goes for New Year's Eve and into, I think it's the third, the second, sorry. The Flowmobile will be here on the 26th of the day after Christmas from 10 to 1:00. And the Education Advisory Board, we have the Mr. and Mrs. Southwest Ranches on January 3rd at the barn at 6:30, and that's always a lot of fun to watch, to watch the kids do that. And I want to divert for just a second and make a few comments about what was going on tonight. People have talked about our responsibility up here, and it was kind of amazing because we demonstrated it immediately. We found something that we didn't like, we didn't know about, and we pulled it immediately. I mean, it never saw the light of day. So we exercise our authority when we can. And we also have these advisory boards, which are made up of you all. And they tell us what they think. That's why we kick stuff back to them, because it's a resource. And it's an advisory. That's all it is, is an advisory. They don't make the law. We do that up here. And we kick it around ad nauseam. And I'm sure everybody in here, and we have all kinds of different opinions going in, you know, 20 different directions. And we all funnel it all through Andy and through the town attorney and through Russell, the town clerk. So there's a lot, there's a lot of responsibility going on up here, and we know when to exercise it. And you just saw a very good demonstration of it tonight. And I want to say, having been on the advisory boards for the first 10 years of our town, it's a very rewarding and exciting thing to do. And I want to mention one thing. I usually go to almost all the board meetings, and I stay silent. And the reason I stay silent, I'm making this comment in reference to another comment. I usually stay silent because when I was on the chair of the drainage board, we would put together a project or what have you, or something was coming up, and a council member might be present, and they didn't care for that project. Well, I knew, I learned the hard way, immediately that was going to be torpedoed behind the scenes. I mean, let's get real here, okay? So at that point, when I became a council member, I did not want to stime any conversation or any comments or anything coming out of our, the members of our community, our residents who make up that board. And I think they do a pretty good job. We have like seven or eight boards. We have some that don't meet all the time, but I think they do a pretty good job. And they devote a lot of their time. So I just want to give kudos to all of them. And I know I served on them for 10 years, okay? Before I became a council member. But this ordinance that got pulled, we're going to go, there's a couple of good things in it, there's a whole lot of turkeys in it, and we pulled it immediately, okay? I mean, some of it was borderline ridiculous. But we'll address that in another forum. Everything is open, everything's transparent. We dumped that, we dumped this thing right away. So I just want to make mention that. You're watching, you're watching government in action, responsible government in action. Just want to make that comment. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Who else is next?
I'll go. First, happy holidays. A little levity, happy holidays. This has been a tough night. I do want to address a couple of the questions that came up. You know, we're really not supposed to, if somebody asks a question, we're not supposed to blurt out an answer. So I want to try to follow the process that we have on a piece of paper here. So Mary Ann, is Mary Ann Allen, are you still here? You know, a couple days ago, I think it was around Monday, my phone started ringing off the hook. And that generally tells me there's a problem. And I probably got four phone calls and at least two texts, Fred, that there's a challenge in this concerning horse trailers. And you know, I'm the liaison that Dee was talking about, okay? I was on the Comp Plan Board for 10 years. I think about eight out of the 10 years, I was the vice chair. So I know how it works. I understand the gravity of it. I know how contentious it can be because the people in there definitely care. Now, a comment was made that the council doesn't participate. Mary Gay, do I participate? I've got a big mouth in there. Because if I hear things going the way I, I'm not comfortable with what's being discussed, I jump in because I'd rather deal with it there if I feel that the community is against it or, you know, based on living here for a big part of my life, that doesn't fit in with our lifestyle, I'm pretty vocal about it. Now, there are answers for all the things that people are unhappy with. I don't know the whole range of what people aren't happy about because we didn't get into public feedback on it. But there are definitely answers. And a lot of them are not cloak and dagger. I mean, it's, it was voted on by the group, and maybe they didn't fully understand, maybe I didn't fully understand. But to Gary's point, you know, my, I usually read, I mean, I've been involved in formulating that one for the last two years. George, you were the chair when we got started on this last year. And I generally have a pretty good idea what goes into it, but the problem, and somebody pointed it out, I don't know how, somebody said four drafts? Uh-uh. It were probably 15 drafts that we reviewed over and over and over again. And to Michelle's point, somehow things went from A to B, and over that long, it's, you know, when it's a simple thing that the Comp Plan Board works on, and it's a month or two or three meetings, everybody tends to stay in touch. But when you stretch something out over two years, you get into ordinance burnout. And I think that could be part of it as well, where everybody's got the best intentions, but it starts getting blurry after a while. But the bottom line on this is, we voted unanimously to pull this off because we don't agree with it. That's the way the process is supposed to work. Residents are supposed to reach out to us if they don't like something. Or, like I said, if I see something up front that I don't think is going to fly, I open my mouth and say, not in our town, but things get past me, too. So you know, anybody who wants to knock the process, tell me how we can make it better and we can fix that. This is a process. I do process for a living, and when things don't work properly, I'm more than happy to improve. So you know, if you don't like what's going on, call any one of us. We can all explain it to you. Everybody here has sat on boards, everybody here, basically everybody attends all these board meetings as well. So you know, bottom line on it is, if you've got a question, you've got a concern, if you don't understand how this is going to proceed, because I got that question, that's why I asked, we can explain it to people, call me. My number's out there, or write it down, 954-801-1758, or pull it off of, or look me up on the town website. That's why we're here. We don't, I don't have self-interests when it comes to the town. My interests are the community's interests. So if you don't think I'm doing a good job, definitely vote me out. If you think I can do a better job, talk to me, because I'd love to hear it. I think we all would. I'm not speaking on behalf of Bob. We're all here to take your input, if it's a bad process, if it's a bad idea. We don't know if you don't call. I mean, we have our own intuition, we have our own experience. So Mary Ann, with regards to the, probably I shouldn't get into it, but I have a neighbor that built a beautiful barn in his backyard. And he filled behind it, that 25 feet between him and the fence line, guess where he parks his trailer, his boat, and everything else? So you know, he doesn't want to see it. The barn blocks it. So why not? Why would we ever want to take that away from somebody? You know, there's things in here that we all thought don't make sense. Just moving on, you know, Michelle, you had asked, you know, how do things change? Lot of people involved, and there are also professionals involved. And I don't mean this with any kind of malice, but when we draft something, Jeff may jump in and say, you know, you can't do that because it's superseded by state law, or you, you know, based on the character of our town, which you all know, maybe this is a better way to handle this, or have you thought about that? So that's how new ideas get introduced. And from a legal perspective, you know, honestly, before it gets to us, Keith's always got the last say to make sure it's legal. If it's not legal, we'll end up in court and you know, with either somebody If it's not legal, we'll end up in court, and, you know, with either somebody in the town or somebody outside the town who's looking for a legal opportunity to make some money. So, you know, things can change there as well. And, you know, we, so there's a bunch of processes that can conflict and produce results that, at the end of the day, those things don't work together. So that's why we're here, as the final arbiters and, you know, the people that make the decisions. Because if it doesn't make sense, doesn't matter all the process it's gone through, we say no. We try to fix it, and then we move on after we fix it. Debbie, you wanted things in simple terms. Hopefully, this is simple terms, because I don't speak better than simple terms. So, you know, if you have any questions about any of this, please come see me. Or, again, I'll, does anybody not want to see her?
Okay.
Everybody, I think, would want to jump in and help you out if you can. And I won't go into the, I don't speak up, Noel. I think I addressed that. So, again, happy holidays, folks. Delsa, you're doing a great job in your second meeting, is it now, third meeting? So she's doing fantastic. I couldn't, I couldn't even remember my name the first time up here when they, when they called me to vote on something.
I don't believe him.
So, anyway. Thank you, Doug.
Gladly. Delsa?
Deb, I just want to say, call me. And, because we're new at this. And unlike some people, I want to be. I want to be helpful. I want to be available. I won't make everybody happy all the time, a hundred percent of the time, but I want to be the best I can be for the town. A lot of you know me from many, many places, but if you ever need anything, I'm here. Some of you already have my, my business card. Real estate was my life, right? So, please, you know, have a good holiday, and don't, don't ever think that, at least while I'm here, that this council will try and get away with anything that isn't right.
We can. We have all of you.
Go ahead, Dee.
Oh, just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays. Hope all your New Year's resolutions and wishes come true. Hope everybody stays in great health. Please don't drink and drive. Better than that, don't text and drive. Okay? And that's all I got to say.
Okay. Awesome. I want to wish everybody a very happy, healthy holiday and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. May you all have a great one and stay safe. Some other, on a different note, one of our resident sons just got back home out of the military, and he's here tonight. So Christopher Flores, if you'd please stand up, buddy. He's a senior airman, U.S. Air Force, in the fifty-five Special Security Forces, U.S. Air Force, so. Greatly appreciated. Glad you're home, safe and sound. Look forward to it, getting to chat with you a little bit. So I want to thank you for coming out, and glad you're home, safe and sound. I know you're on some other missions and stuff that I can't talk about, but stay safe.
Yeah, Dad, stop smiling back there. Your face is going to crack.
Welcome home.
Welcome home.
Absolutely. So that's it, I'm good, folks. Onto the next part. Let's see, administrative, legal, we got.
Sure, Mayor. I'll be brief. First off, Councilmember Hartman, thank you for explaining a little bit of the process, because the one thing that I know residents don't always understand, it's at least as relates to my department, we get it last. So after it's been vetted by the boards, they give us their draft, they ask us to review it. In this particular case, the draft went to an agricultural law expert, Katie Edwards. She told them where it was legal and where it was legal. She then sent it back to Jeff Cadums, who made the changes. It then went back to the comp plan board for approval before it came forward to you. So you're absolutely correct. We look at things last, we don't draft, we don't do that. That was up to the board to do at the first point, so thank you for that clarification. There was a comment that was made in social media, apparently, that I was called tonight on, actually, as I was driving back to the meeting from Hollywood, because they said it was so outrageous that they asked me to address it. Lot of times, there's a lot of fallacious rumors out there, and this one was crazy, and it dealt with the school board site. So I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page publicly on the school board site. The school board bought the property on one ninety-fifth and Sheridan Street. This happened a long time ago, okay? When the town bought that property, the town was also required to have an affordable housing requirement by a department called Department of Community Affairs. That department since went away, but the town upzoned that property and increased the land use to say that that site would be the ripe site for affordable housing in the future to get through the requirements of DCA at that time. The town council then said, well, if we're selling this property to the school board, we want to make sure that we deed restricted so that that property could only be used into perpetuity for a school, K through twelve school. That's the only thing that can go there is a K through twelve school. The school board, and then what happened, and I think it's back on the agenda maybe later tonight, this, the, the county never recognized the town's land use on that site because they said, you know, the town's not high-density multifamily, we're never going to approve this. So the county left it as, as low-density residential on the county map, so the maps conflicted. For many, many, many years, the town contacted the school board and said, what are you doing with this site? You know, you're never going to build the school here.
We'll buy it back.
We'll buy it back. The town went through wars on schools and school districting. Remember, we used to be with Cypress Bay. We've been at wars with the school board. So what the town council always stated, from back when it started, to even recently when we discussed it, that if someone someday would do a K through twelve veterinary medicine, agricultural and life sciences school for the town of Southwest Ranches, that that would be an incredible, incredible asset to the community on the site that's deed restricted for a school, okay? Tonight, apparently, someone was going on and on in social media about the new charter school coming to Southwest Ranches. There's no charter school coming to Southwest Ranches. But if someone knows one that can cut the deal with the school board to potentially build the agricultural and life sciences school that the town has requested the school board to put there since two thousand, that would be the perfect opportunity to match two groups together. The school board did meet with the town of Southwest Ranches to say, we are looking to probably dispose of this property. We do have the first option of buying it, but the school board now has a conundrum, and it's very simple. When the school board sells property back to the cities that it bought it from, they deed restricted for not being a school. And we've deed restricted it to only be a school. So if they were to sell it back to us, the property would be absolutely nothing. And as a result, when they do their appraisal on the property, it's worth absolutely nothing. So the school board is now debating what to do with the site, but if they did ever give it back to the town, it would be solely to be utilized as a school, which is what it was land use and zone for back originally when it was created. And, and the hope would still be that someday, the town could have its own school for agriculture, equestrian medicine, veterinary medicine and life sciences, which was the goal dating back to the infancy of the town. So I just wanted to clarify that because the comments were so astronomically false and all over the place that I just wish people would come to more meetings to actually hear what's going on rather than just making it up and trying to make it truthful on social media. No further comments, Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Also, be very, very brief. As I've shared with you all individually, and I'll share with the public, Robert and Avet Solera are going to be leaving the town. They're relocating to Gwinnett County, Georgia, and I wanted to take a moment and wish them well. And let the public know that we'll be working with Julio Medina, who many of you know from code enforcement. Julio's been working with Robert for a few years now, and we're looking forward to a very smooth transition with no glitches and just continuing the proper customer service. Other than that, Mayor, I just want to wish everybody a very happy and healthy holiday and New Year.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Number eight, Russell.
Number eight is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four, excuse me, pursuant to Chapter one sixty-three Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter?
Keith.
Number eight.
Keith. So they were approved by the LPA. They're here for you for approval with the recommendation of approval.
Okay.
Is this the one where we give the lending authority to borrow on, based on revenue? It's the next one coming?
This is the capital improvement element, I'm not sure.
This is a five-year scheduled capital improvement.
Okay, all right. Then it's probably the next one on the agenda.
Nope.
Nope. All right. Seeing no additional public comment, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number nine.
Number nine is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the future land use map of the town of Southwest Ranches comprehensive plan by changing the designation of approximately thirty-three acres from medium-density residential to rural ranch to match Broward County's future land use map designation, generally located at the northeast quadrant of Sheridan Street and southwest one ninety-fifth Avenue, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, requesting recertification by the Broward County Planning Council, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. This was approved by the local planning agency. It comes here for adoption. I described this unintentionally during legal comments. This is to match the county's map with the school board parcel that's deed restricted for a school. I should call it my charter school, but that's what this item is before you, and is for your approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Any public comment on this matter?
Noel Holly'sworth, one hundred ninety-ninth Avenue. There's what, you've got one half of the deal here taken care of. The other half was when we decided to put the low-income housing, the sixteen DUC, DAC. We also changed the comprehensive plan, putting a land use in there for sixteen units per acre. That needs to be deleted at this time. That comprehensive plan should not be allowed to remain in there, or some developer could come in and say, because it's in the comprehensive plan, I wish to change my property to sixteen units per acre. And come before the council. And if the council changes at that time, then they can go ahead and do it. Because it's already in the comprehensive plan. So you need to delete that section of the comprehensive plan, which is the sixteen units per acre, out. Thank you.
So in order to delete the comp plan, you have to have a vote on that?
No, it's, it's an amendment. It's apples and oranges here. What Noel's saying is that there happens to be a category in our comprehensive plan that allows sixteen units per acre, and he would recommend that at some point, the town council remove that plan, or that someone could come before the town council and seek to change the land use on their property. But I will tell you that if there's five votes to change the land use on a property to sixteen units per acre, there's also five votes to put it back in the comp plan. So it's really not an emergency, you know, to do. But at some point, you may wish to remove that category completely from your comp plan.
Jeff, what's your opinion on it? Should we leave it? I mean, because we have to grant it if somebody wants to change.
Not before us tonight. He's just asking his opinion.
You would, the council wouldn't grant it.
So it could stay forever?
Right.
Okay, all right. That's why I was looking for opinions from professionals. Thank you.
Okay. Where we going? Public comment? No public comment? Call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number ten.
Item ten was pulled, Mayor.
Ten was pulled.
Okay, good.
Ten was pulled. Transparency here.
Item eleven. Item eleven is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code by amending Section ten thirty, terms defined. Amending Article one zero zero, application submittal and notice procedures, Sections one hundred dash zero two zero, general application requirements, Sections one hundred dash zero three zero, minimum required content for all public hearing notifications, and one hundred dash zero six zero, mail notice requirements for public hearings, creating Article one twelve entitled special exception uses, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this came before you and the council by the local planning agency with the recommendation of approval. This just creates a process for a special exception in case you ever need it in the future.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Any additional questions?
Just a quick request, Keith. I'm not sure if everybody understands why we're doing everything twice. A lot of people think, well, this is just government wasting our time. Can you spend thirty seconds on what the LPA is, how it recommends, and how the council adopts?
Sure. The local planning agency is required by Florida statute as a first board to review changes to your code, okay? The town council voted back in two thousand to make itself the local planning agency, which a lot of municipalities do. As a result, although it seems strange, it's a Florida statutory requirement for it to be reviewed by the local planning agency before the council. So because of the way that we've set up that the council's also the LPA, you're making recommendations to yourself.
So the LPA was the time between the second pledge of allegiance and the third pledge of allegiance.
All right. Call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number twelve.
Number twelve. This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the town council meeting schedule for the calendar year two thousand twenty and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any additional questions? Seeing none? Call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thirteen.
Mayor, thirteen. Okay, sorry, I was going to say fourteen.
Item thirteen is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the town holiday schedule for the calendar year two thousand twenty and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Any additional questions from the council? Seeing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, items fourteen through nineteen are the renewal of the boards for next year. In the past, you all have lumped them into one item for approval, separated or joined for your discretion. What would you like to do?
Yeah, we're going to add some people.
You're going to add the names? Okay.
So I'll go to the first item. So item fourteen is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the fire advisory board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing for an effective date.
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any changes? Anybody doing any changes on any of the board, on this one?
On the fire board? No, I'm sorry. I would like to put it off until January, please.
Not a problem for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wait, you just want to put up your appointment?
Yeah, her appointment. She's talking about her appointment.
Okay, just her appointment.
Yeah, just her.
I'm just, I'm just speaking for myself. Sorry, that's what I thought I was asked.
Commissioner, is that for all items fourteen through nineteen?
So, no.
No.
She just wants to withhold.
No, no, I know that, but is that going to be for all of them or just?
All, please.
All of them.
Okay, okay.
Good.
What happened?
She's holding till January until she makes her appointment. We're moving forward on the other stuff, but she can add her appointment later.
Oh, right.
Okay. All right. Anybody else need any changes?
No.
Is anyone adding or subtracting? Which board?
Still, we're still on the fire advisory board.
Fire's done, so.
Okay, so call, okay, we ready to call, okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item fifteen, this is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, restating the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Are there any changes to this?
Yes, I'm adding Jim Starkweather, James Starkweather.
Do you have that already? Uh, I have to look at this roster.
He's got a vacancy.
He's got a vacancy, so.
It's a vacancy, there's nobody there. And he's standing over there, he'll accept.
Are there any other changes?
Any other changes?
We don't have one yet.
We do.
Yeah, is that something we want to consider acting on, and somebody go out and drum it up?
Do we have somebody that submitted?
Not right now.
No.
Okay, then leave it open.
We'll leave it open, okay.
Then we need a motion and a second.
Motion to leave that open?
No, no, to approve the item.
I thought we did that.
No.
No, I haven't done that yet.
Okay, motion, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item sixteen, a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Recreation, Forestry, and Natural Resources Advisory Board, ratifying the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date. Um, I'd like to add a member, Dina Butler. Do I need to make a motion to add a member?
Make a motion to approve with the added member.
Make a motion to approve with the added member of Dina Butler.
Okay, you're gonna do that, I was gonna do that, so.
Okay.
Go for it.
Alright, he did.
Second.
Thank you.
Any other changes or adjustments?
Hold on, wait, 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 one second, one second, one second.
So, is this at large?
She's at large, yeah, yeah, not to replace anybody.
I was gonna say, you're replacing.
No, we discussed it with the chair, and she's fine with it.
Okay.
Everybody, I was gonna bring it up in earlier meetings, but it was so close to the.
No worries.
You know.
Yep.
Mayor, may I add one thing to this?
Go ahead.
There was some discussion and a request from the board to make Astor Knight an honorary member of that board,
Okay.
which would create a vacancy for Councilmember Amundson to fill at her discretion.
Okay, not a problem. So do we want to modify that?
Yeah, I'll modify the motion to reflect that.
And I'll continue in a second.
Okay. Okay, call the question.
Okay, Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Uh, before we move on, we did the drainage board, and we also had somebody who wanted to be involved there. Apparently, we have an at-large there.
We.
Is Yardeel Fuentes, he's the gentleman that showed up here that actually wanted to apply for the District Three seat, but didn't live in there, I think he was in your district area, if I recall. This is the guy that said he'd help out any way he could, you know, he's got a lot of skills and capabilities. I don't know whether we want to go back and revisit this, I'd love to, because if he's that enthusiastic, the way he talked that night, why not?
Well, we haven't opened a large seat, without a doubt.
That's what I'm saying, so let's plug him in, but we've already voted on it.
It's okay, is there a motion on that?
Sorry.
We're between items, so if you would like to make a motion, make a motion.
Let me make a motion then to appoint, and I hope I'm giving his name justice, Yardeel Fuentes, to the vacant, at-large seat on the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay. Call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Great.
We're on item seventeen now.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date. Any changes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any changes first, no?
No, no changes anyway, okay, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eighteen is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Schools and Education Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Any changes to this board?
Not me.
Not me.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the question, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item nineteen is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Any changes?
No.
Motion to, wait a minute. Which board?
Comp plan.
Comp plan.
Comp.
Yeah, last one. Page one twenty-nine D.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the question.
Call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, items twenty and twenty-one on the agenda are actually quasi-judicial in nature. They were properly advertised in accordance with state law, and notice went out to the neighborhood. On the agenda, however, it was put at the end, normally quasi-judicial is placed at the beginning. For those of you who don't know, Florida courts determine that some items require to be done in a judicial fashion where the council is serving as judges to determine whether or not an applicant can present an item and prove by competent substantial evidence that they should be granted what they are seeking. Most of the time, the council's working in a legislative capacity, but in this case, it's quasi-judicial, they're acting as the triers of the fact. The two items on the agenda today, twenty and twenty-one, will be treated in a quasi-judicial nature, which means that all people who want to testify on the item have to be sworn in and state their name for the record that they've been sworn in when presenting their testimony. So at this point, Russell, if you could swear in and have stand any member of the public, including Jeff Cadums and anyone else who wishes to speak on these items.
Is there anyone standing that's going to testify on this item, Iglesia?
It's twenty and twenty-one.
Okay.
We're gonna do both.
Please stand and raise your right hand, speak after me. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Is the applicant present? If you could just state your name for the record, that you've been sworn in, that you know why you're here, you've reviewed the staff report and either agree or disagree with it, then Jeff will do the staff report.
Certainly. Jason Wilson, for Pillar Consultants, representing the applicant. I was sworn in, and I agree with the staff report that Jeff put together.
Great.
Okay. You want me to repeat?
No, we heard it.
Okay.
If you heard it, everyone heard it.
You're mean.
No, but, I mean.
I know.
Jeff, if you could please enter the staff report.
We'll look up, we'll look up in the.
Okay, this is a very simple.
It's a no-brainer.
Just waiting. This is a very simple site plan amendment. This is Iglesia Mission Vita Church at 17950 Griffin, it's a ten-acre property, but only about a third of that property is actually developed. The east half is a soccer field, an open space, and about half of the west parcel is actually developed. There's a church building and a trailer that's been there since Broward County's approval of this, the original site plan. And what they're in for today is a storage and office building, mostly storage. It is a two thousand three hundred ninety-six square foot building. I'll show you, that's the aerial view of the property. And that's the proposed location to the upper left of the church building.
East of the church.
Well, yes.
This description is conflicts. It says it's on the west half of the ten acres?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, the developed part of the property is on the west half of the ten acres. And this is the west half you're looking at right here.
I keep envisioning it as west of the church.
It is to the rear or south of the church building. I was just referring to the photo, saying it's like to the upper left of the church building, that you could see where it is. Okay? It would be minimally, if at all, visible from Griffin Road. This is the elevation, with the front elevation being in the middle, the rear elevation, which faces away from Griffin Road on the bottom. And the floor plan's a little blurry, sorry, but it's basically open storage with some office space. I did specifically ask the applicant if they wanted to label this as all office, in case their needs might change in the future, they said no. It's not gonna be used for that. And they have plenty of parking regardless of whether it's storage or office. And they meet all code requirements, except for a couple that were triggered by the fact that they're in for a site plan amendment, so. You know, they came in ready to pull building permits, and we hit them all over the head with the landscape club, and the parking lot lighting club, and the dumpster enclosure club, and, you know, this is their first time back in front of, seeking an approval from local government since Broward County in nineteen ninety-eight. So we are requiring that they bring landscaping up to code. They propose dumpster enclosure, and they are, they don't have any sight lighting, they don't have any parking lot or driveway lighting, and that's unusual. Broward County approved the site plan without any of it. They also say that they do not operate at night, and they've never used the lighting. So they've also requested a variance from the lighting requirements. And it's interesting, because we have an entire article in the code that's devoted to outdoor lighting, but it's a dark sky ordinance. So there's only one little sentence that says, oh, by the way, you know, parking lot lighting should comply with the national standards, but it's mostly, we think of it as a dark sky ordinance. However, because they're in for site plan approval, it specifically requires them to install that lighting unless they get a variance tonight from the council. So that is the second application before you. We're recommending approval of the site plan subject to bringing in the west parcel, which is the developed parcel, into full compliance with the town's landscape requirements within the following timeframes, commencing on date of approval of the application. One would be removing the invasive trees on the developed parcel, much of which they've already done, they've taken out most, if not all of them. Submitting a phased irrigation plan to correspond with the phasing of site landscaping, revising the landscape plan to show buffering along the west property canal, and providing a bond for a hundred and twenty-five percent of the staff-approved cost estimate for this landscaping, and that has to happen prior to building permit. Number two, install landscaping irrigation along the canal near the south property line, which we've done prior to a CO for this storage building. And finally, install the west property line landscaping, replace missing dead and diseased plant material within the parking facility, and cover all exposed dirt areas with turf, all with irrigation, and tree wells within twenty-four months of tonight if it's approved. And of course, this is subject to approval of the variance, otherwise they will have to install parking lot lighting. That's my report.
Jeff, a question that was just asked of me that, to make public, do you know what's being used, the storage is being used for?
The applicant addressed that, but they did tell me that was soccer equipment mostly.
The storage?
Everyone's getting an amber alert, I apologize for that.
The storage facility is mostly gonna be used for clothes and supplies for public outreach, in addition to.
What, say that again?
Public outreach, so clothes and supplies for any type of public outreach that they have to do, in addition to just regular church storage.
And you're okay stipulating that for the record and including that as a a condition of approval?
Okay, sports equipment as well.
And you're okay stipulating that and including it as a condition of approval?
Correct.
Alright, so.
I have a question for him.
Sure.
Because this was a piece of property, and correct me if I'm wrong, our code enforcement officer was notified several times that there was storage of vehicles on this property, dog grooming, to be exact. So we're not going to take and rent storage so that any vehicles can be parked inside at any time, and you're going to make sure that what you're telling us tonight is the only thing that's gonna be in there? Because this was brought before code at one time.
Good night, everyone, my name is Esteban, I'm one of the pastors of the church. No, not at all, the situation with the cars is, one of the people, I mean, someone that went to our church, they have a business, they asked us if, you know, we have a bunch of land, if they could park their cars, and we didn't see any issues with it, and then as soon as we got the letter, I think I spoke to Julio, and we addressed it right away, so, I mean, no, of course not. To be honest, just to give you guys a little bit of info on why we need the space, we don't have some, I don't have an office, we are very limited with our space. We have a lot of projects in Nicaragua, Colombia, and Venezuela, outreach projects, I believe that as a church, we're called to help other people. So we just don't have the space, I mean, we, sometimes we want to collect food to send, and we literally don't have anywhere to put it. So the building is gonna be used for office space, some soccer equipment, which we have an academy, a youth academy for soccer in our church, and we're gonna have a lot of food, clothes, medicine, a lot of stuff that we send overseas to help out. That's basically what the building's gonna be.
Can we be a little more specific when this is put into place on what they?
He's, the gentleman's articulated what it's being used for.
Okay.
Mostly public outreach, we will make sure that the resolution's clear, so that if there's violation, we can treat it accordingly. Marty Sherwood wanted me to mention on the record that, just so you know, the building will be treated as industrial whenever there comes back to be a fire assessment, because it's a storage facility and built for a storage facility. But that's just for your knowledge down the line in the future. The final thing, the only thing that I requested, and I don't know if it was in the staff report?
Yeah, I wanted to add one thing, we've been talking about the site plan and referring to the variance, if council does grant the variance, please condition that upon execution of an indemnification agreement, holding the town harmless for anything in the parking lot and on their premises that occurs, and naming the town as additional insured, and it's a formality, because I actually have the signed agreement, but I'd like you to please add that to the motion.
Thank you, I just always worry with no lights, which is great for the town.
Yes.
But if someone trips and falls, I don't want to make it look like we allowed that to occur, that they're indemnifying us. So with that, does the applicant have any further comments to make? Does the town council have questions to the applicant?
Are you finished?
No.
Okay. So, I drive past your church every day, a couple times a day, and I've seen the vehicles back there, and I don't have a real big problem with it, because, I mean, particularly when you mentioned it's a parishioner. But what worries me sometimes, and you need to be really cautious, somebody can come up with a great idea, well, they'd love to use some office space, and you rent them office space, that's commercial use, now you're in violation of the land use and the zoning for that building. Then somebody may come on, oh, let's put a couple of dog grooming slots in here and make them more money for, you know, the church, everybody can use more money. All that would be illegal, so I just want to caution you, so if somebody doesn't get a great idea, you go down the road, and all of a sudden, why is code here?
Yeah, just to chime in on what Bob is saying, though, this is a very small town.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if something is going in on there, or there's traffic going in and out at night, and the reason for no lighting is to keep, buyer beware type of thing?
Yeah.
It's not gonna fly, because it is commercial like Bob just said.
Excuse me, Bob, when you said cars, you meant commercial cars, right?
No.
No, what I'm...
Just regular cars, right?
What, 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 what I'm saying is, if the person who's renting the space to park their, their basically pet grooming vehicles?
Okay.
If they come to you with the idea that, we'd like to use some office space out of your new...
Not at all.
You can't let up.
We, we can't afford it, we don't have this, we need the space.
When money talks.
Actually, that, that's gonna be, I, I'm gonna be using some of that space, so, yeah.
Right.
It's definitely gonna be used just for the church.
Definitely is now, but, you know, if something changes in your situation and some space frees up, I just wanted to caution you, you couldn't use it for a vet grooming area, you, you know, it has to be used for what you're asking for.
Absolutely.
And you're a pastor, so we trust you.
Yeah, it's gonna be used for that.
Good, good. Jeff, I had a couple of questions, and I'm glad we talked about this early in the week, because the indemnification question you and I didn't talk about, I'm glad you addressed that, because I, I mentioned, I'm worried if, if we say yes, no lights and somebody falls, does the town have a problem? So that's been resolved, thank you. But we voted earlier on a special exception process, and the key, uh, um, Jeff and I discussed this earlier in the week as well, knowing that we had our special exception coming up. A variance is good for everybody who wants to leverage that variance. Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, if we put a variance in place to allow them to not put in the lights, can somebody else claim that same right on the next piece of property that comes along?
No, it, it doesn't create a precedent, but on this property forever, there's a variance to not al- to waive the requirement to have lighting.
So is it a better idea to use our brand-new special exception process, and I don't want to put you guys through, through more hoops, maybe we just rename this, but use the special exception process to grant this with the current owner, et cetera, um, and we possibly go back and change the comp plan or the zoning to allow no lights under very specific situations, um, or we just leave it with the special exception. You know, we've got a perfect record on no variances, so, you know, variances always worry me that they're gonna come back and bite us some way.
A special exception normally runs with a particular use, like you're allowing a particular use.
Right.
If you all want to modify the code to say a waiver of lighting can be done via a special exception process, we'd have to modify the code. Currently, it wouldn't be a, you know, a process within the code. When you created the special exception, it's now sitting there, but now you have to attach it to whatever you may want to.
So until we enact it.
And if you did that, then, had this been that case, it would, you would have approved it and it would just be for them. So the problem for them would mean that if they wanted to sell it down the road, the new owner would have to put in lighting.
They couldn't apply for a special exception?
They could, they could.
Okay.
But I, I'm just saying, you know, it runs with a special exception.
With the owner, I get that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to avoid variances and if we haven't, but it doesn't sound like we can do it, because it's not codified in our comp plan.
It can't be done tonight for this particular property.
But is this something that we, and I'm talking to the Council now, is this something we want to ask the comp plan Board to take a look at? No? Uh, and the reason I'm saying that is, we could make a minor modification here that gives us better control over what's there and limit it, and it's not forever like this is gonna be.
Well, it's something we can...
Let, let, let's get over the hurdle we're at right now and then just...
Yeah, yeah. I'm not saying tonight, but I'm just trying to get a sense on, on how we want to move forward on that.
These aren't big enough, Russell.
Yeah, they are.
I can't do it.
Stand on it, that's what I tried to do. Uh, that's all the questions I had, thank you.
Well, just like I said, just so we're clear that, uh, we're not, have no dog trucks parking there and then landscaping trucks, and then this truck, and before you know it, we've got a full-blown business running out of there. It's, uh, for good use, and you're basically talking clothing and needs for whatever, and, um, if that's the way it is, then fine, but like I said, it is a small town, it, you know, it, it gets out. It does get out.
You're on the front lines, being on Griffin Road and everybody sees you.
Probably, yeah, so you'll be like watched a little more.
Good.
All right, call the question.
Okay, we, we have two items. Russell, did you read the second item?
No, hold on.
Okay, if we could just...
Huh?
Also, also, sorry, we got a lot going on, uh, here. We didn't do any Jennings disclosures. Did anyone have any communication concerning this item?
Nope.
No.
Okay.
All right, let me read the two items. So the first item is a resolution in final order of the Town of, the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number SP seventy-four dash nineteen by Iglesia Mission Vida Inc. to amend its existing site plan by adding a two thousand three hundred ninety-six square foot storage and church office building and incidental improvements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date. The second item is a resolution in final order of the Board of Adjustment of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving, denying, application number VA seventy-four dash twenty by Iglesia Mission Vida Inc. for a variance from subsection zero nine five dash forty, subsection B of the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to waive required vehicular use area lighting, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
With all the caveats that he mentioned?
I'm sorry, yeah, with all the stipulations attached.
Second.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay.
Call it.
Any public comment on this matter?
David Kozinski, sixty-four eleven Holliday Trail, Councilmember Schroder, thank you for expressing his comments about parking vehicles, it's a big concern in our little town. Uh, my question has to do with, um, the lighting variance. If, uh, sometime down the road, if the, um, applicant decides to put lighting in, are they gonna have to apply for a lighting, uh, I guess, reinitiation, revariance?
Undo the...
That's my only question.
Undo the variance, I guess. Keith?
No, they'd have to come in and get permits for light.
Permits.
Yeah, no big deal.
Um, I'm familiar with these people, and, um, they, um, are very good, and if they do something wrong, which they were cited for, I guess...
We'll just take your firstborn.
They took care of it. Yeah, yeah. But they really are good people, and, um, I think you've laid down what you expect of them, and I don't think you're gonna have a problem.
I just had, uh, one question on this.
Go ahead.